This is called the order of the Board of Education, Mount Healthy City Schools meeting, regular meeting on December 12, 2022. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and it's not to be considered a public meeting. Can we have the roll call?
Mrs. Anderson, present. Ms. Bryant.
President.
Mrs. Ellis.
President.
Mr. Kilgore.
Here.
Dr. Turner.
I'm here.
Okay, will you stand for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You might get yanked off, too. Okay, we have any discussion of the agenda, any changes, additions, or, okay. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda for today's regular meeting?
Summit.
Second.
Any questions about anything? Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Since all the board members have a chance to read the minutes in advance, is there any additions or corrections that anybody has? Okay, I have a motion to accept.
Summit.
Thank you.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Okay, under special orders, Mount Healthy Teachers Association.
There's no input.
Okay. Communications announcement, public input?
No.
Okay. We're gonna do C, presentation, student growth award?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Ellis. So tonight, we are thrilled to have a presentation, and I wanted to give just a little bit of background. Every year, we get different growth measures for our students. And in the last couple of years, it has been a challenge, especially because of all of the things happening with COVID, with our students facing a lot of disruption to their education. So we have a few teachers in the district that reached the highest level of growth in the state, which means they grew their students the equivalent of two or more school years in one year, which, I mean, that is amazing in any time, but especially during the last recent history where we've had a lot of challenges. So we wanted to recognize these amazing teachers at our board meeting, and so we have a little plaque for them that they will be able to put up in their rooms, and it just says hashtag worthy, significant student growth. We're gonna just ask them to come up, and then I'm gonna ask Dr. Og, oh, Bryce is here, to take their picture, so we can put it on our website, and if any of them would like to say anything, get my mic out, so you are more than welcome to say something if you'd like. So the first one that we want, yeah, the first one we'd like to recognize is Joel Bartlett. Come on up. Congratulations. Do you wanna say anything?
Well, let me stand right up here.
What building? Yeah, at least.
Okay, yeah. I'm lucky enough to work in the junior high with the honors program for eighth, seventh, and eighth grade science and social studies, and I get the pleasure of working with some of the most fascinating kids every single day, so. We're happy.
Wait, wait for everybody. Oh, do you want him over here? Okay. That's great. Next, we have Quinika Lampley. Come on up.
Hello, I'm Quinika Lampley. I teach fifth grade math and science at South.
Next, Judy Nordman. Come on up.
Oh, hello. Um, yeah, so I'm Judy Nordman. Some of you know me. I've been around a long time. This is my 27th year in the district, so, yeah, so, you know, my mom's name is actually on the plaque out there. She sat on the board with some of you, so, yep. So fourth grade, reading and social studies. I went back to it last year and love it, so, thank you. Appreciate this.
And Melinda Stanley. Come on down.
Thank you so much. Whoops. I teach seventh and eighth grade ELA in the ACE program, so I do reading and writing every day, and the kids love it.
And one person could not be with us tonight, and that is Nicole Bruner, so we will be getting her plaque to her.
And she's at South. Oh, that's her partner, fifth grade.
So could all of you guys come up just real quick? And the board, do you guys wanna take a picture with them, or just, you can be behind them? Okay. If you guys wanna stand in front here, so that we could just get a picture of all four of you, that would be fantastic. We are so happy to have them on our district, and we appreciate you guys coming tonight. You're welcome to stay for the board meeting, but if you don't want to, that is fine as well.
Julie, did you know I haven't came to say?
Uh, we, I, we had three rest days of the, oh, yeah, that was something, two weeks ago, um, and it's very bad in motion, and he's in the back, three, some rain teacher, and um, I was like, you back in the morning, and um, that's all.
All right, thank you. Um, I haven't went to the meeting for great old, this, tomorrow, now Wednesday, so I'll have to do that before January, okay? Okay, legislating?
Yeah. So after several months of them not doing much of anything, they've made up for lost time, because we're now in the lame duck session before everything changes. So this is a message directly from OSBA, from the Ohio School Boards Association. Last week, in, last week, the Ohio Senate passed by a 22 to 7 vote, substitute Senate Bill 178, which would restructure the State Board of Education and the Ohio Department of Education. The House Primary and Secondary Education Committee has scheduled two hearings and a vote on the bill this week. They're acting fast on this. They're asking that people contact the members of the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee and ask them not to pass this bill during the lame duck session, urge them to reintroduce the bill in the next General Assembly to allow time for ample review, consideration, input, and debate. You can find the members of the committee and their contact information online. Our representative here in Mount Healthy is Catherine Ingram, and she is on that committee, so that would be one of the people you could contact. If the bill is passed by the committee, it will most likely be on the House floor Wednesday. So they're also asking that you contact your House member as well, and ask them to hold the bill until proper consideration and input can be given. And again, our representative here is Catherine Ingram. If passed, this bill would create a Department of Education and workforce with a cabinet-level director appointed by the governor and approved by the Senate, which would reduce the role and significance of the State Board of Education, which is currently, about half of them are elected officials, and superintendent of public instruction. It would divide the agency into two divisions, the Division of Primary and Secondary Education, which would also include preschool, and the Division of Career Technical Education. It would authorize the new department to be responsible for the rulemaking process and the enforcement of current rules. It would maintain the structure, the current structure of the State Board of Education, but limit its duties to teacher licensure, educator or staff conduct, and territory transfer decisions. That would be it. Everything else would go to this new committee. It would undermine the role and authority of the elected members of the State Board of Education. The board would no longer be acting in any significant way on behalf of the citizens they represent. Ohio will be at its best when the interests of the people are served through publicly-elected boards, and the State Board of Education is no different. It would move decisions about important topics, such as setting the state's learning standards, graduation requirements for students, and school report cards, to department staff, unlike the current process that is transparent, purposeful, and includes many opportunities for public input. The current state board rulemaking process is transparent, with many observers and interested parties weighing in on the decisions before the board. Over the years, we have seen parents, school leaders, educators, and the public take advantage of the transparency of these deliberations. These opportunities for public input and participation will be lost if rulemaking is moved outside the State Board of Education as proposed in Senate Bill 178. So again, they're asking everyone to please contact the committee members and our House representative to urge them not to just do this while nobody's much paying attention, because that seems to be what's going on. Other possible legislation to watch between now and when the new session starts after the first of the year. The following bills have received significant legislative active, action during the lame duck session and could potentially be enacted by the close of the 134th General Assembly. However, lame duck is a time where anything can happen, and bills that have not received action so far in the lame duck session may suddenly move, but they're asking that we keep an eye on. House Bill 554, which would require the State Board of Education to issue two-year temporary education, educator licenses to applicants and expired professional teachers certificates to, sorry, to applicants with expired professional teachers' certificates and professional educator licenses as long as certain requirements are met, which I assume is because of the current shortage. Uh, House Bill 151, which would revise the Ohio Resident Educator Program to allow mentoring to occur online or in person, and prohibit the State Board of Education from limiting the number of attempts participants have to successfully complete the Resident Educator summative assessment. The bill would also require districts to provide one day of professional development leave for classroom teachers, excuse me, each year to observe a veteran teacher. Additionally, the bill includes provisions of House Bill 61, which would enact the Save Women's Sports Act to require schools to designate separate, single-sex teams and sports for each sex. Also, House Bills 294 and House Bill 458, which are essentially the same, but they're moving through the process at slightly different rates. These would make changes to election law and absentee voting, including the removal of the August special election, which a lot of school districts count on when they have to put levies up. Uh, and finally, House Bill 105, which would require public schools to provide age-appropriate instruction in child sexual abuse and sexual violence prevention, and require in-service staff training in child sexual abuse prevention. So, like I said, they've been very quiet for a while, and now there's this sudden flurry of activity that's worth watching.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Uh, can we have a report of the treasurer?
Yes. Item 9A is a recommendation to approve the October scheduled bills.
Do we have a motion?
Summit.
Sure.
Any question? Do we have roll call?
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item 9B is a recommendation to accept, accept the October financial statements.
Summit.
Thank you.
Any question? Have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item 9C is a recommendation to authorize the treasurer to create the following account, the Mount Healthy Education Foundation.
Do we have motion?
Second.
Any question? Do we have roll call?
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Item 9D is a recommendation to authorize the treasurer to transfer the following funds, $100,000 from the general fund account to the Mount Healthy Education Foundation account.
Can we have motion?
Summit.
Second.
Any question? Is this something to get that fund started?
It is. And with the foundation, it allows us to take donations from certain organizations that will only donate to a foundation. So we would be moving money from the district over that would be used for our students if needed, but you have to have a base to start. And right now, we actually have a donation of $180,000 waiting until we get the foundation created. So a lot of, especially businesses, will only donate to a foundation. They won't donate straight to the school.
Thank you. Do we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
And that's all I have.
Okay, now we'll do the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Under our first item is that we're super excited to let you guys know that the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission has awarded Mount Healthy City Schools another $300,000 for safety and security grants, and that would be $100,000 at North, South, and the junior, senior high school. We had already received two other $100,000 grants, so that makes it a half a million dollars that we're receiving in grant money from that. So we're very excited. This is typically, when we have safety items, that's something that would typically come out of general fund, so this enables us to do some work related around safety, such as upgrading cameras and working with some things in the building that makes it a better environment for all of our staff and students and for our community, because it's grant money instead of coming out of the general fund. Mount Healthy has partnered with the Title Babe Period Covered Program. We are the first school that they've accepted as a partner, and they will provide 4,000 feminine hygiene products monthly to Mount Healthy City students. We have students that deal with poverty, and when girls need feminine hygiene products, often if they can't afford that, they may stay home from school until they come back at a later time. So this grant enables us to put products free of charge in all of our bathrooms across the district. Students can take as much as they need. That way, they don't have to go to the nurse's office or ask someone, which could be embarrassing for them, and it's just another way for us to remove an obstacle so that our students can be present and receive the excellent education from our staff that we heard about earlier. So we're really excited about that. The Ohio STEM Learning Network has provided us a grant funded by Batel, and they have awarded Mount Healthy City Schools $5,000 for an EX3D lab project, and Cheryl Wilson will be one of the people that's leading that. Cheryl is at the middle school, and so we're excited about that. And then we also had a second award under this same program, and it was funded by Batel, another $5,000 grant for the Ready, Set, Go project, and that will be led by Patrick Dwyer, which is another of our teachers. So two more grants there. Also, Mount Healthy has been awarded the Martin Luther King Junior Service Grant for $1,000. The Community Service Grant will allow pre-K through sixth students to make cards and gift baskets for first responders. Grade seven through 12 will create personal hygiene kits for the homeless. This learning service project will allow students to show appreciation for men and women who serve our Mount Healthy community, and will allow students to reflect on the continuing importance that Martin Luther King Jr. gave to the world. So we are excited, you know, for Connie and her team are just doing amazing things in the grant department. You know, I'm just amazed. Every month, we have more and more awards, so we really appreciate Connie, appreciate Connie and her staff for working so hard, bringing in money to the district. We, I did want to let everyone know, you know, we're aware that we have a lot of students that move in and out of our school district. About 30% of our student body is transient, and so sometimes when students are moving around a lot, they always don't get the immunizations that they need. So we will be doing an immunization campaign, just getting that word out, what immunizations you need to be into school. And we do have the health clinic available at the high school, and we have people who actually go out to the elementary schools at different times to provide these free of charge. So you may see over the next few months, a campaign just encouraging our families to take advantage of that and to get our students immunized.
And those are, what, measles and?
Yes, just the basics, measles, mumps, and we also do have, like, if you want a flu shot or a COVID shot, they do have those available as well, so. Ted, you know, they have a lot of, just the basics. Okay. Item B is the recommendation to approve Conger Construction Group as the construction manager for the construction of the new culinary arts addition at the junior, senior high school.
Do we have a motion?
Summit.
Second. Stephanie, move. I second it.
Okay. Oh, yeah. There any questions? Do we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
Dr. Turner.
Yes.
Thank you. Item C is the recommendation to adopt the following changes to the Mount Healthy locally-defined seals as a graduation requirement for the class of 2023 and beyond. This is, we just update that, you know, students must have at least one state seal and one local seal, so we update those periodically and have added some other opportunities for local seals.
Do we have a motion?
Summit.
Second.
Any questions? Do we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bryant.
Yes.
Mrs. Ellis.
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore.
Yes.
And Dr. Turner.
Yes. Thank you.
Item D is the recommendation to approve the Mount Healthy High School Credit Flex Plan.
Summit.
One second.
Any question? I do. Um, you know, as long as I've been on this board, I have never seen that before.
The credit flex?
Yes. I read the whole thing. I mean, what is its purpose?
So credit flex is something that the state of Ohio allows schools to do, to help students to show that they have proficiency of material. So it can be, once a board approves a credit flex plan, it can be utilized in a lot of different ways, and Dr. Reichel can give us more input on this, but for one way, that I'm not one of her examples, but I'm just gonna say in general, sometimes students will come to us from schools, and they might owe money, and they will not release a transcript, but they might give a pass fail. Well, if you have something in place, we can accept a pass fail without having the official transcript, because they're saying that they passed a class. The flex plan gives the students the opportunity to show what they know, and if they can show that they understand the material, then we can award credit for it, because a lot of our students have gone in and out of schools.
So a child coming from another school district for ours, see, because I didn't understand whether we were paying something out for them to get their.
No. No, we're not. We award the credits. We award it, right.
Yeah, but if people know what they have done, I can you award something to them?
Sometimes they will send us a transcript that will just say, for instance, Valerie took algebra and she passed it, but they won't say that I've received a B. Okay, they won't send us the official transcript because I owe $50 for a library book. So that puts a lot of our students at a disadvantage, because that would mean that we, they would have to take every class over again, because we cannot get that official transcript. But the schools have to tell us something, and that's, you know, a way to help with that. But that's, it's a lot more detailed than that. Mindy, do you wanna give us some?
So there was legislation passed.
Do you wanna come up and use a microphone? Well, just because they won't be able to hear you on the.
All right. There was legislation passed in 2017 that says we have to give students the ability to mastery assess, so essentially, students can fail classes for all kinds of reasons. They can know the content inside and out, but let's say they never turn in homework, but then they do really, really well on the state test. So according to the law, if you do well on the state test, even if you got an F on your transcript, we also have to look at that as proficiency and issue a credit for that class. Also, a student should be able to test the class. So let's say I've sat at home and done science experiments with my dad's, with my dad for the past five years, and I don't feel like I need to take biology. It gives me the ability to pre-assess. Technically, we're supposed to have had this on the books since 2017. You all did pass POLICY, the official NEOLA recommendation that a lot of districts passed, but now we have to have the specific guidelines to talk about what it will look like in our district to meet the law. Do you have any, I'm happy to answer any other questions.
No, it's just that, I just didn't remember if they were passing anything like that, and I've never seen it in writing, what that flex plan was.
I think there's, in general, as we're pushed to look at what does it mean to learn content, as opposed to learning isn't just hours in a seat. So if I can show mastery of a content, if I can create some sort of project that shows that I understand algebra, if I can, I don't know, create some sort of roller coaster that shows I understand parabolas, or something like that, I should be able to get credit and not just have to sit in a class that I already understand. Or conversely, if I've sat in that class, but let's say I never turned in homework, or I had a family emergency and I didn't pass, but I'm able to take that final and get a B on that class or on that test, I should still be able to get credit because I understand the content at a proficient level.
And one thing Dr. Reichel mentioned, that by Ohio standard, they give the end-of-course exams, and if they test as proficient, so if you have a three or higher, that's saying, according to the state of Ohio, they are saying, you're good, you understand the standards. That gives our counselors the ability, like Dr. Reichel said, maybe a student had some type of emergency and they just missed and were not able to finish the homework. But, but that test is a state test that shows they understand the material to the satisfaction of the state of Ohio. That allows us to give them credit for that class.
Let me ask you something. I know at one time, we did a lot of, your child wasn't schooled enough, they, they could not take a test and pay a cost. Is it still that way?
No, we have removed the penalty for linking attendance to academics. We also removed that, for instance, if a student is suspended, that is their consequence. They don't have an additional consequence of not being able to make up the work. They can make up the work.
Thank you. All right, so if I'm finished with my question, please have a roll call.
Yes. Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item E is the recommendation to approve American Facade Restoration LLC to proceed with the repairs to South Elementary East Wall. The total cost, one ninety-eight, six hundred dollars.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
Any questions?
Do you have any idea how they're going to repair it?
Yeah, Dr. Ogden has all of that information. He's ready to go, he's so happy that you asked.
Yeah. Asking, so, um, this has been quite a journey, um, especially when we found out in July of this wall and going through multiple engineers, forensic engineers, physical engineers, um, finding steel working company to go through it. So been quite a process, but essentially what they're going to do, um, is on that east wall, they'll dig down. They'll insert, uh, resistance piers, which think of it as steel beams, which will attach to the foundation. It goes to bedrock. Um, I think there's a total of eighteen that'll be inserted there. Then it will be filled in, we'll clean that up down on the inside in the middle classroom, I think room one sixty-seven. They'll actually fill the underneath with some foam because that foundation had sagged a little. Not similar, very similar to if that's ever happened in your garage at home or your front stoop, your porch, where it erodes away, same fix they do just like at your home. Then on the southeast corner, where if you see there, that's where you visually can see the crack, they will actually be ribbon tying that into the south facing wall. So, uh, number of fixes that will go on, um, and I'm excited to get it going. This, I, I feel like this has been a very educational process, to say the least. And trying to get as many plates going as possible, so we've submitted for permits. So I'm not saying it's going to get done tomorrow, but we're about four to five weeks ahead of schedule from where we were two or three months ago. So, any questions? All right, fair enough, thank you.
And we're, we're still, we're, we're still hoping to get money for this from.
We are.
Someone.
We have, we've contacted our insurance company, we've contacted Ohio School Facilities. They're kind of pointing the fingers back and forth, but we are, Dr. Ogden has worked with them extensively.
At best, I'll say very cautiously optimistic. This is why the OFCC basically, it's, it's a, I forget the specifics of it, but it's basically five years from the completion of construction, where well beyond that. It wasn't an act of, what they call insurance refers to as an act of God, meaning it wasn't a weather storm. It wasn't, that's where the forensic engineers came in, our insurance company came out. It is basically years and years of settling. Um, when our boring, when the Alts Witzig came out to bore, you look down, they can see, I'm not an engineer, but basically types of soil that lead to excessive settling. Um, when you add in a couple of droughts over the years, that adds to it further. So yes, I'm digging, but I'm also not going to stand up here and say we're going to get a ton of money for it because we're just in that odd ten to twelve year window of the building, which should last fifty to sixty years. Um, unfortunately, that's where we're at. I will say in talking with, um, OFCC and a number of engineers, I've heard what I will refer to since taking operations as horror stories of this happening two, three, four, five years after a construction project. Um, and when it happens that early, then you're in a real situation. Because yeah, OFCC or insurance might pay for it, but that's a serious settling issue. What I've been told is while we don't like it, this is normal and does happen. And the fix that is going to be put on the resistance piers is going to be made to last for a very, 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 very long time. The resistance piers will more likely outlast the building at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Ogden.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. We have the recommendation under F to accept the following donations to the Mount Healthy Boys Basketball Team. Five hundred dollars was donated by Joseph Turner. A hundred and fifty dollars was donated by Gateway to Success. And two hundred dollars was donated by the Cardwell Company LLC.
All right, do we have a motion to accept?
Second.
Any questions?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you. Item G is the consent agenda.
Do we have a motion to accept? Second. Is there any questions on the dissent count?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
And Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Okay, um, there are no special awards, to my understanding. Anything anybody wanted to discuss? No? Okay. Um, I will have, do the Board of Education report. I need a motion to select a date and time for the public hearing on the budget.
Month, please.
Thanks.
So moved.
Uh, well, my record, my record.
Yeah.
Uh, January nine, at five thirty.
Our next board meeting is January nine.
Yes.
That are regular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I just meant, that's a minimum, or we need to, yeah, we have to come forward.
And.
Could I have a motion to accept?
Would, would that be before the regular meeting then? Like at five o'clock or something like that, or five thirty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Okay. All right, so moved.
Second.
Okay, no other questions? Do we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, now we need a motion to select a date and time for the organizational meeting and the regular meeting for the month of January.
I make a motion that we do that at six o'clock that same day.
Okay. Okay. Do we have, so you made the motion, okay. Can we have a second?
Second.
Is there any questions? Okay, could we have a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, now we need someone to act as the temporary chairperson at the organizational meeting in January. Any brave souls who want to do it?
I recommend, uh, Mrs. Anderson.
It's easy.
Are you wanting to do it?
Um.
That's easy.
Yeah, I do.
Okay. Okay, can we have a motion to accept that?
So moved, uh, second.
Okay.
Can we get a roll call?
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
All right. Is this where you want to go next?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're going to go in an executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official. Okay, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Here's a roll, and we'll do this at six forty. Now, am I saying that right?
Yeah, six forty. Then we won't be taking any votes or anything when we come back, so.
Other than adjournment.
Okay, you seconded, you seconded. Oh, Kilgore, okay.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant? Mrs. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Kilgore?
Yes.
Dr. Turner?
Yes.
Okay, as Julie just said, we will not be doing any, um, what is it? Voting or anything after this. Just something that has to be discussed. Okay, let's go.
All right, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, um, we come back at seven something, I can't even see.
Seven oh seven.
Seven oh seven?
That's my big point.
Okay. Um. The other thing I wanted to ask you all, did you look at the schedule for next year? Does anybody have any changes or anything? Yeah, well, I guess it probably will be because we'll run into the same thing we got this year, right? Which. What, does it really make any difference? Oh. Didn't say, were you going out of town? Oh, okay. Well. I have to check something for July. I still haven't found out when that, uh, the conference is going to be that I got to go to. It's usually the second weekend in July, but I, I haven't, I haven't got the information. See, buddy, it, see, these people get to changing it. It's always has been the third weekend in July. Then they moved it to the second for some reason, whoever was in charge did. Then they moved it back to the third, then they moved it back to the second, and I think it's been the second ever since. But you know how people, when you in charge and you can change everything to six, ten thousand people? I guess you go through your head.
Um, and also there are several, if you, if you ever want to change, if we move to the second week, we could do that. There are four times, there's a December, but it will be the second week because of holidays.
Yeah.
January, February, June. But you're right.
No, that goes to the end, um.
And, um, because June, there's a holiday on the third, and, and now December.
I may have something around June about this accrued that I'm not sure when.
What, November the twenty?
That's why I was just thinking, December, Christmas, Thursday. I mean, we could change that off to the second, if you guys wanted that, but.
It don't make any sense.
It doesn't have a Christmas.
Um, what?
For next year, capital.
Yeah, there, there was something up there already.
Yeah, it's up, it was on the back of the.
Yeah, some, something.
Well, I've got the program on my. That should be around there, because they usually have those fifteen years.
Okay.
They don't have it on their side.
Yeah.
I do have the program in there.
Um, I thought I saw. Are y'all talking, see, the twentieth, you say is what? Is that Thanksgiving week?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, that's what the calendar says, Thanksgiving.
We, we had it Thanksgiving, the Monday before Thanksgiving this year.
Well, this is really only at our discretion, whatever we want to do. The dates. You can go.
Just bring me back some gifts.
Okay, well, that, that's fine.
You understand where I'm, I'm from.
Yeah. I, I mean, it, it doesn't bother me. But the thirteenth, well, is that, okay. So Election Day is the seventh. And usually that following weekend is when we wound up going up to Capitol Conference. And we wouldn't be able to, to do both. So, I'm, hey, you know, it can always be moved to another day. It don't have to be on Monday. There's no law that says we have to do it on Monday. I mean, uh, if you wanted to do it like.
You always do it on Wednesday.
No, that's, that's, I gotta go grade O's. So let's, let's, let's.
Time to think about it.
We got time to think about it, so we can, uh, do that. And, and really, look, look at the schedule and if there's something that really impedes what you want to do, vacation wise or otherwise, make sure you let Levanda know and the rest of us know. And then it can be changed. And then again, we could always do it, that same, the meeting before, hey, I can't be here, this is happening. And it bleeds, we have done it several times.
Yeah.
So it's not a problem changing the date.
Well, I will say the February date does, is not going to work for me.
It's not good for you?
The thirteenth.
Yeah, I already know that I have to take it somewhere back there.
So February the thirteenth is not good for you?
No.
Uh, is it just that day?
Just that day.
I mean, we could do it the third.
We've done that too. The sixth?
This is not the third. No, it's the second because the third is President's Day. And we were already moving it back on, so like in November and February, I mean, the first one. And the schedule bill told me twice, but, you know, they could just be in February the next week. That's the only good option.
Okay, well.
Don't worry about it if I mess it, no big deal.
The eighteenth of September?
No, December. Changing December eighteenth to your, like, moving it to October.
Oh, yeah, I, I got that note there. Okay, well. If February the thirteenth ain't good for her, let's, let's move it then.
Yeah, we can leave it to Tuesday.
Move it to Tuesday.
Not Tuesday, but. That'd be Valentine's Day.
Boy, that's valid.
Jimmy's going to be taking you out.
Down to me, don't please, don't try it. I tried to get us to dinner on Saturday. That didn't work. Then Sunday I wasn't feeling good, she decided, oh, you want to go eat? No, I don't want to go eat, leave me alone. Okay, we could do it on the fourteenth, Valentine's Day, unless y'all got something to do.
The sixth of that. The sixth of that. So we'll just have a whole new, yeah, we'll work on that.
Uh, we're going to change that to the six. Uh, we gonna change that to the sixth, okay.
We'll work on that and send out.
And so, you want, and you want in November to be changed?
Yeah. We're, we're thinking about November during the first week in November.
Oh, the first week in November?
Well. Yeah, we would have to because Capitol Conference, we wouldn't be here.
Oh, I have that, I'll check that, but we'll send you new list of potential.
Well, I know that's how this, that's been, they've been doing that for years, that way. The first, um, the first, uh, weekend after Election Day, or the same week as the Election Day, is when Capitol Conference, so, Election Day would be the seventh. So, we would be up there starting at Sunday, which is the twelfth and the thirteenth.
Right.
And, um. No, you can't do the sixth because I won't be available.
For, uh, because you'll be with polls.
I'll be at the polls. Yeah? You have to set up. Huh? The twentieth? Hmm.
But then, December's.
Okay. We run into any difficulty, we'll battle it out right then and there on that meeting before, and we will come up with a suggestion. Okay. You want adjourned?
One second.
Okay. Uh, we'll make this seven, what?
Eighteen.
Seven eighteen? Do we have roll call? Are everybody in favor? Okay, anybody opposed? All right, this meeting is officially adjourned.
Thank you, ladies.
And y'all have a nice holiday.